States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome, children.
Greg Lauchel?
Here.
Emily Sayers?
Here.
Sarah Merlitz?
Here.
Pam Spoor?
Here.
Laura Cardoso?
Here.
And Steve Valkens?
Here.
And I'd like to just mention that we've had some complaints about hearing back there. So if people in the audience would be on the quiet side so council can hear and the speaker can speak. So, thank you very much. We have a petitioner, Mr. Joe Neber.
We brought the, obviously it's not ideal that we brought the larger version of the plan, but it's also probably better that I'll, how many of these I've got? These are the, I want to reach myself here.
You want me to pass them out?
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Here.
That'd be perfect. Okay, first of all, my name is Joe Neber. For those who don't know me, I'm the speaking this or not.
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah.
All right. So I own Granite World at 1450 Dixie Highway. I also own a company called K and R Construction in Florence. We're a concrete, concrete company. We do flats and commercial in Northern Kentucky. This is Greg Burling.
Greg Burling, they're on Investments, Parkland Homes, better generation developer in Northern Kentucky, headquartered in Fort Wright. And then Mark Zimmerman cannot be here tonight. His mother's heading back to Florida and he had to have dinner with mom. So, Mark Zimmerman is third generation, Trudy and Zimmerman. They're a local builder developer at Fort Wright over on the corner of, what is that, George Hughes, I guess it is, in Park. So, anyway, so three of us kind of found ourselves together because Mark called me and asked me if I had some space he could use down at my place at Granite World. And it was at exactly the same time I was looking for more space. And so, and I decided to embark upon a journey of trying to find a building somewhere around Northern Kentucky that would work for both of us to be able to have more space. And really difficult. So, he called me one day and said, hey, what do you think about the idea of looking at the Sashwan Gardens place? Because it's directly between our two businesses. And I said, that'd be perfect. He looked into it, kind of threw some ideas around. The way it lays and whatever, the idea was to be, we would use some space and kind of reduce some kind of commercial thing. And the numbers just didn't work out for us. So at that point, I received a phone call from, from Mark saying, hey, Greg and I want to meet with you because we've got an idea for the Sashwan Gardens property. And that project started, I guess we talked in April. It was April this year. So we shifted gears. We thought, well, you know, while we're, since we've, since we're looking at the property, Greg and Mark actually put the property under contract back then. I don't know exactly when, but late May, or late April, I should say. And so, they brought this townhouse proposal to me and said, hey, let's look at it. And so, we knew that, you know, understood the zoning, understood the challenges of the property. And I think they spoke with Burnley Engineering, I guess, trying to kind of see, hey, what can fit on this property or not. A lot of people looked at this property, it's a very complicated property for the money you've got to pay for it. And what really is difficult about it is it's split and it's not a very favorable split of commercial and residential. So, and that extends all the way through four or five parcels immediately adjacent. So, at any rate, I thought that Steve or you, somebody came up with a concept that we're showing on there, rerouting Arlington as a part of this process. Basically, just while we had it, we were going to see what we thought the best, you know, the best opportunity for the high store of Sashwan Gardens to go away, fix some maybe traffic issues. And obviously, you know, we're trying to develop it. We're, you know, we're not nonprofits, so we obviously want to do what's best for somebody buying the property. And so, the finances on it basically pointed towards, you'd have to kind of get some high-density residential or medium-density, not really high-density, medium-density residential in fact, for the purchase to work. And I'm not sure, I know a handful of people who've looked at the project before, where the property before us. And I think everybody had kind of the same kind of concepts and kind of ideas. For coverage, the zoning really kind of kills it right off the bat. It's extremely difficult. In today's zoning, if you tear that down, if you tear down the Sashwan Gardens, the new requirements of parking on the commercial side of that, it would be nearly impossible to kind of pull something off that way. And from the residential standpoint, I think if we wanted to tear down the Sashwan Gardens today, we could. And we could build four to five duplexes in the back there, maybe ten years. So, really depending on the engineering that you do. So, the current zoning on it allows for four or five duplexes. And really, it's very complicated on the commercial side on the front because it's not very deep. So we embarked upon calling everybody in the adjacent property. If I can back up just a hair, I mean, today's the eighteenth anniversary of my company, Granite World. And it is our eighth year in Park Hills at 1450 Dixie Highway. So, close to half of our existence has been up on Dixie Highway. And we're very proud of that. And we're thankful for the ability to be here. But we've grown. And so, that's why I even looked for the space requirements in the first place. I've been trying for about seven years to get Greg Smith to sell me the properties that are Eric's auto house and Jerry in the back is Frame Shop. I like both those guys. They're great guys. They're good family, little businesses, they're supporting their families back there. But I would really like to have the property. And they don't own it. And so, I've been unsuccessful in buying that. For the past three years, I've been renting space in what used to be Jack Tovin's building, or Judy Tovin's building, on the other side of Think He's Pub. And I made some very ridiculous offers to Luke Gam, the gentleman who owns it, to buy that. And I think I'm thankful that he turned me down because it was ridiculous money. And, but he's got, you know, he's got a nice little rental space there that's not going anywhere. I mean, he's a young guy, he's making money off the building. And it's his prerogative to sell it right now. Okay? Since we've been looking at the Sashwan Gardens, we talked to King Chiropractic. They own, obviously, the chiropractic and then the diagonal property behind it.
Next to Cup Cat.
Next to Cup Cat. Two separate properties. One, you know, both owned by the state of Joe King. Jason Flynn behind there, the two family, I talked to him, probably could buy it, but the money just doesn't make sense to pay what he was wanting to have out of it. Berger Insurance, Mark called Berger, they have zero interest. So, the moral of the story is, we're trying to get a bigger assemblage than we have written on here. So, it makes it very complicated, okay? Under today's standards, it makes it near impossible because of requirements for any kind of tax amendment or because of today's acreage requirements. So, we continued on the process anyway. And, and I don't know if there's any left. I'm happy I'll be handling them. So, we decided, early on, I called the mayor and said, hey, this is what we're thinking about. Should we, you know, can we come to council or whatever? And as we, as we kind of talked back and forth, Greg and myself and Mark said, hey, why don't we do this? Why don't we just call the individual council members and talk to them individually about the project that we're doing here and see if, if anybody tells us, we weren't looking for like, we didn't come out of these meetings thinking that we had a directive to go ahead. We were looking for, we hate you, get out of town. Okay? We hate the project, no way. And I think it's fair to say that no one gave us anywhere near that far. I feel like between May 2nd and May 9th, we met with everybody. Steve here, I'm sorry, Councilman Valkens. And that's because thankfully, his daughter was getting married. And so, you and I had a long conversation on the family, I believe, and kind of talked it through. But everybody had the exact same conversation that we presented last Monday night at Granite World. So if we were moving forward, the same plan, roughly the same plan, might be minor change or something to it. I don't recall what it would have been. But the same plan, same road, same conversation about needing a density change in the RM, and the potential to maybe go after funds from the redevelopment funds that Senator McDaniel had committed to the Kent County cities for availability to kind of do, work with tough situations up and down Dixie Highway. And on the major corridors of the cities, you know, there are none highway. So, the idea, quite frankly, spawned out of like, development is oftentimes much easier than redevelopment. And so, what happens on these cities is what I'm finding about trying to buy buildings from, and quite frankly, my building would be tough to buy. Family-run business in a, in a building that roughly is the size I need on Dixie Highway, I got in at the right time. I'm 54 years old, I will be working for quite some time, and my building will not be for sale. And I can tell you, nobody else's is. And I think, I didn't ask Eric because he just put a god awful amount of money in permacell. But literally, Ron Stam, I never approached, but I've approached almost everybody on Dixie Highway just for more space. And I don't blame them because we're all just family businesses trying to make a living. And they have some jobs in Park Hills. It's a great community to, and it's a great core. So, the assemblage wasn't going to happen anyway. So, after those meetings, we basically said, oh, well, that's surprising. We didn't get any, and if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting, please feel free to correct me. We got, I didn't think we got any negative feedback. We got a lot of, we got a lot of feedback about green space, about, you know, the neighborhoods and stuff like that. And so, we said, you know what? We hear you. We're going to kind of, we're going to work as much as we can on every bit of that. We're in no interest, we have no interest. We're the three local guys with local businesses. We are not in the business of setting Park Hills, Fort Wright, Fort Mitchell, anybody, you know? So, we tried to come up, you know, with, with, we had the conversations, we took notes. We understand the complexities and we understand what the, what we thought that the council people wanted. And so, at some point, you got to try to move forward with the plan. The scariest part for me was when I had to call Mrs. Powers on Arlington. And Mrs. Powers is someone whose yard I want to put a street right through her beautiful flower garden. Okay? And I called and I said, Greg, I'm not going here alone. But we invited her and her son, Mark, down to Granite World, saying the same plan. Very pleasant. Invited us up to her home. We walked around her pool, walked around the yard, walked around the side yard, toward where we thought things would be or not, you know, according with the way the plan plays. And she didn't say, hey, I love you, come, you just take it. But she said, you know, her words were, you know, I'm 77 years old, and I know the progress has to happen. And I don't like the situation of my driveway. I've never liked it. She's not happy with what ended up, whatever she was talking about, seeing the top of the police station. I don't know. But, you know, she was concerned about, you know, she said, you know, I'm willing to try to work with you. I'm not saying yes, but if we can work something out, I'm willing to do. And we went and we were like, well, we didn't get punched in the face. It's beautiful. So, we, you know, that was going to be like a very big obstacle for me because I'm not in the business of saying, you know, ultimately, the city will have to do the street if you guys say you want to do it. And ultimately, I would never, I would, I would walk away from anything that was a public take. I've never believed in it. And so, that was a concern. We're like, nah, that's not, that would not happen. But there would have to be some property acquisition of, from her property. Okay? The other thing is, how do you realign the street when the street comes through the front part of Sashwan Gardens? To line it up, it has to line up with South Arlington. Okay? So, to go around the back of the police station, you need to build a retaining wall and a subdivision standard street that would go to land that we would potentially own. Okay? We will own it if this goes through. And so, the city would need to be able to get that property to be able to put the street on. Okay? So, the concept that has not even been talked about very far because we've been trying to see if we're even going to get far enough to actually have the real conversation about how that goes down. Okay? The, the high-level concept is, well, essentially, the city would need some property for the street. We would, we would want to try to get more property for the development. And potentially, there's a swap or you do appraisal, appraisal, and then there's going to be some kind of making hole and whatever sign. That's the 50 cent version of what it is because that's as far as we've really kind of pushed it before, before council gives us any kind of indication that they support the project, they support the relocation of the street, they support the nomination to stop it. So, got to do Mrs. Powers, had the conversations here. Started having conversations with PDS about like, hey, you know, what are today's requirements? What, you know, what does Z21 mean, whatever? And try to figure out what the opportunities are to get the density to be able to move the project along. Okay? And so, essentially, it came down to the RM zone would have to be changed. And you can speak densities if you want to or whatnot, but it would have to increase the density, bring in a density and parking requirement in the, in the RM zone. Okay? And then, what else? I think that's it, right, on the zoning side? And then we would have to get it implemented. And so, there's two ways to implement. You see if the city is willing to, and this is where we were, and I think this is where puts us right here and put us in the meeting last week. We asked that the city consider the RM, yes, the mayor, you know, have the city consider the RM zone as a part of the Z21 process. Okay? And essentially, it would streamline the process if the council was, was favorable to the project, to the project. And if they were concerned about the financial part of the process, that I think, you know, there's a good chance they could get the funds to do it. But it's, it's not an unlimited amount of time and the funds are going quick. So, there's no pressure from us other than those funds are there and they're finite. I'll get that out here in a second. So, anyway, our understanding was that, so, so in order to do it through the RM and the Z21, a sticking point for that is that the requirement for notice is just press release, I think. You know, and I don't know where you do your press releases. I don't know if it's linknky or, you know, sensite.com or whatever. But that's the only, that's the only requirement for public notice for Z21 at all, which I'm actually a little bit amazed about because there's some significant zoning changes being made in, in Z21 in every city, you know? Not to mention, you know, you've gone from five acres down to 10,000 square feet to be able to apply. That's, in my opinion, pretty significant. So, so, but that's the only requirement, you know? So, whoever would see it in a, in a public notice in, in whatever medium you look at. So, so we have to do that. And then, I think you guys had October 2nd, October 3rd, something like that, is the Kent County Planning Commission. It goes before Kent County Planning Commission. And if they pass, you know, with, with or without it, you know, either way, we'd have to go to Kent County Planning Commission, come back as recommendation to council. Council would have to have two readings, which I guess prospectively would be in October and then November would pass it. Probably November would pass it, potentially in December. I think that's the quickest you guys will be able to do Z21, whatever you guys pass in it. So, the Plan One, and I think you guys are on the way down there, is December, you get, you get, you get the product as you have it right now. And then, if you say you want to have the, if you guys are okay with the project or, you know, even the ancillary project of the road, then we start with, you guys would have to file for a text amendment and we would have to file for a map amendment. And it could be done simultaneously, but the, but, but that process would be similar. Actually, the difference, the difference in, so it'd be similar. There'd be a public hearing in front of Kent County Planning Commission. Planning Commission would come back with a recommendation on the, there'd be two readings, two sets, they have to be up to at least 30 days apart. So, you're talking about maybe April of next year, the very best, if anything can happen, or we would get an answer on this concept at all. Okay? In the meantime, the way development works, as everybody knows, you get a piece of property, you have a contract on it, you have a due diligence period, that expires, you feel pretty good about, you know, the direction it's going. So you get an extension, which we did. And then, I don't, did we get, I don't know if we got a second extension or not.
We did.
So we got a second extension. And then, I think we have like six more days. So not long after the hearing, we're going to have to do a series of extensions that are just essentially, you put down whatever money and it just goes away. Okay? So, every two months, we would have to give an extension with non-refundable money, not knowing what this body feels about the project until probably December or January. And that makes, quite frankly, that's not your problem, that's ours. But it makes it tough for us to kind of say, take that gamble. Okay? So, the time, that's the two timelines. Okay? What were we, what were we thinking along the lines of the, trying to do it as an RM? We were going to try to make a recommendation to the city, hey, if you like the project, these are the changes that will have to happen in the RM zone from the density and the parking requirement. Okay? The city could still, we're, I'm going to go for a couple more minutes and then I'm going to let Greg talk in. But the difference between the two is notice. Okay? And time, obviously time. But the difference between the two processes is essentially that there's a minimum requirement of the notice of just the media, of the advertisement, newspaper advertisement versus in December, that's going to happen, there's going to be a sign on Dixie Highway, and seven people are going to get a letter. The seven adjacent property owners will be the only ones who will receive physical contact from anybody from the city or PDS if they process it for you. So, the only difference between October and December will be those seven people getting the letter and a sign that technically is supposed to be on the part of the property that would be being changed, which would be behind the Sashwan Gardens. So, the sign would be located. I'm assuming they would let you put it on Dixie Highway. Probably you would do a redundancy, put one on Dixie Highway and one behind the building on the part of the property that was getting the zone change. So, and then the property owners would get that. That's the only difference in notice. Okay? The only difference in notice. Anybody in Park Hills. Arguably, you know, when we thought, we were hearing that people were concerned that it was not being transparent, whatever, Mark put together a letter, I guess, two weeks ago, two weeks ago this Friday, I walked 60 houses in the, in the area. I made sure I got Arlington, Aberdeen. I screwed up. I said Alhambra. I didn't realize that there was two sections of Alhambra. I did the circle closest to them. I think it did all, most of, or it's not all of Aberdeen, I'm sorry, Arlington, all of Aberdeen at the 800 block, the cul-de-sac on, on, uh, uh-huh. Okay? So I handed out, physically handed out 60, basically 10 times, the notice that any citizen of Park Hills is going to get anywhere in this process. I physically walked. Okay? Put it on there and I, you know, and I'm happy. I'm not sure who put it on the Park Hills Facebook page, but it actually worked out pretty well because we had a sign-in sheet last Monday night. I believe I had like 40 chairs set up. And so, chairs were full. And I want to say there's, I don't know, 10 or 15 people who were standing. I'm not positive. So, let's just call it 55 people showed up. 33 signed in. 10 of the 33, and these numbers won't work out because the 33, some are man alive from the same address or two people from the same address. So, I'm going to cup head my mask. All right. It's a little suspect. But, but anyway, so 33 names signed this thing, is sign in. And there was far more people that didn't sign in. 10 of the, interestingly enough, only 10 of the addresses that were listed on here were from the 60 that I handed out. Okay? So, the, the Park Hills, whatever, neighborhood thing netted the other 18 addresses. So, 28 unique addresses in here, 10 of which were from the 60 I handed out. 18 were from, I presume, the Facebook page. Okay? Which is fine. You know, it's, it's great. I feel like we had a good discussion, same presentation that we gave you guys, almost verbatim, I'd say, pretty close, that we gave in May 2nd through May 9th. Okay? And then, wanted to thank people and put it out the next day or two days later, three days later. I went back on that page, thank you for coming, and listed our email addresses for people to be able to come and see, you know, do whatever, you know, whatever. Actually, some people called the next day, actually, three or four phone calls at my office, calling my company, which is fine. I don't care if anybody does. It's the easiest way to get over with me. So, a couple people stopped in. I've gotten, Gretchen's emailed me, I think you had two others maybe, since then, however long it's been. That's the response we've got. You know, three emails roughly between us. I've got some phone calls, you know, quite frankly, I didn't write down who it was because this list was downstairs. But that's the reaction we had. Okay? Why am I saying this? I've kind of done this stuff for a long time. Okay? And notices, you know, you can give, you can give far too little notice. Okay? But I, but I think you can also give too much notice. You know, I'm not saying that. I mean, because, you know, you can end up wasting some money if you blanket like two cities or three cities because you're going to have a finite amount of people. I'd say that most meetings here, you're preaching to an empty church. You know, it's been that way with the time I've done. But I was very pleased at how many people, and I felt like we were very pleased with the way it went and the feedback we've got. And it's real. People are concerned about green space. People are concerned about, you know, hey, how's this property stuff going to work? Well, the answer is, it's on the details. Once we get past, once we get to the point where we feel like we can and should be talking about that, it'll happen. But there's no reason, even if you tell us we're not going to even entertain the RM changes you guys are looking for. There's no reason that this body sitting right here can't go far above and beyond the notice that you're getting ready to give people by October 2nd. Okay? They're going to get, they're going to get a notice in linknky or, or whatever, sensite.com. Okay? And there's some, there's some decent changes in, in, in the Z21 that would probably warrant people having more say than they're going to get. You know, I'm not saying that. I find it funny that that process took, I don't know, three years.
Oh, my gosh, no, longer than that.
And, and the invite list is going to be basically whoever reads that classifies in a, in a online newspaper. Okay? So, we're willing to support whatever we have to do to get as much notice out to have the conversation. We're looking to have the conversation sooner because we believe that, that there's a, there is a finite amount of time when it comes to getting renewals on these, on these extensions. Okay? And hard money gets spent. All right? And then, just so I, you know, I mean, obviously, I read the social media and all that kind of stuff. And I hope that everybody understands that this is just business. And I really, we're not interested in the dynamics of politics in the community or not. We just don't care. But we do care about the timing of everything from this perspective. The grant that we're talking about. Okay? Just so I can be clear. There are grants everywhere that you can get. Okay? $5 million was given to Kenton County. It's the state, to the cities of Kenton County, to come through for the catalytic fund and essentially PDS to judge projects that are worthy of redevelopment, that would have difficulty redeveloping on its own. It's a redevelopment fund intended for difficult properties in Kenton County. Okay? Excuse me. For infrastructure, for whatever needs to have to happen. Okay? The only reason I'm creating any kind of sense of urgency on it is because it's $5 million. Independence just got $1 million. Erlanger got $1.3 million. Taylor Mill just took 803,000 of it. Fort Wright's probably going to get get six seventy-five to a million of it. And so we're already left to about a million dollars and there's nineteen cities in Kenton County. That's, I mean, that's for you guys, if, if you're interested in doing that project or doing it, but the requirements are kinda funny, it's gotta be tagged to it, to a project, okay? So the only, the only sense of urgency I'm trying to create at all between that is, it has to be tagged to a project that, you know, enhances economic development or, or creates a potential for economic development, uh, and the money has to be there. So that's the sensitivity for the time on it, no matter what anybody says or whatever, I don't care. That's, you know, that's why we brought it up. That's, I didn't even know that, like I said, when they brought it to me, I was like, oh, interesting, how are you gonna get this road behind, you know, if he's gonna, whatever? And then the funds, the funds are available, I'm like, hey, the city should go after these funds. So if it's important to the city to look at that, uh, I will say from the city's perspective, if I ever, you know, was sitting in that seat and we had to go talk to somebody about going through their front yard, I'd point my finger at everybody at the table to go talk to them, 'cause I wouldn't wanna do it, okay? I think the sense of urgency for the thing is you got a developer that's, that's saying, hey, let's figure out how to make, make this, this property work. You have a homeowner who's willing to, to basically make the sacrifice of her, her front yard, uh, and you just have an opportunity for funding at the same time, okay? And the project, the property in and of itself, um, it's a very difficult concept to grasp, that somebody's gonna come and buy that, tear, pay roughly half a million dollars, I don't know, what do we figure it's gonna take to tear it down, you know? Fifty grand. You spend fifty grand, tear it down, uh, and then you put in a private road, less than something good as a standard, going back to five duplexes. That's what you get there, 'cause it's really, and I've talked to other people who have looked at it, who have, who have seen the challenges of it, who, who do this stuff. And, uh, that's where we're at. So I'm not, you know, we're not here to debate or what, whatever, we're just here to say, I hope that what you're seeing in front of you is substantially the same you saw between May second and May ninth, okay? I hope that what I'm saying about the RM zone and the funds that are potentially available is the same conversation we had between May second and May ninth on an individual basis. And then I hope that you guys, moving forward, and I keep hogging the mic, would consider what we're asking is to just give us a little feedback, and I'm gonna shut up and let you guys give us feedback on how you feel about the project. You can't vote tonight, I know, I get the program. But what we're looking to do is say, we welcome, we hate it, get out of our building, because that, that makes, you know, the worst answer in life in business in general is maybe, okay? Yes is obviously fun, no is sometimes fun. Sometimes it's real fun. But, uh, but, uh, but, you know, maybe it's, it's really tough, and I know you can't see, do a raise of hands, but our, our request is that you guys consider doing the changes that are required for this, to change the RM zone to the density that, that we've kinda seen, recommended, and the parking that we've recommended, so that all of these things become. Two more things. Uh, I've talked, you know, uh, Sarah and I talked about the Dixie fix, and I had in front of me, uh, I can't even remember what date it was, but I had, uh, people come to me from Park Hills with the Dixie Highway road diet. So this, I had this sitting on my desk since early this year, my, I'm getting old and tired, and so time I don't recognize anymore, but it was sometime this year, okay? And basically what it says, the road diet says, is we need you to shut down all the parking across the front of your building, so we can put a sidewalk in there. And I'm like, wow, maybe we should try to figure that out, 'cause I've got fifteen, fifteen employees, I've got twenty-five parking spots total, three vehicles that we go out in every day, and then whatever the customer base is coming in, we have to be able to accommodate the customers. Not only that, if I were doing what Arnold Horn was doing with Finkie's Pub and putting signs up and saying, I'm gonna tow you, they'd have a difficult time, especially with the Cupcake and Notre Dame people who are on my parking lot every Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays, and Sundays even for the Colonel Youth at this point. And then Eric and Jerry, whether I like it or not, I get ten wreckers a day on my parking lot, unloading trucks, and I get two truck spots for them to buy it or whatever, okay? They have the same issues that everybody in this little section that we're talking about is gonna have, and that if you drop the, if you knock down a Sashawong garden, you build anything that does anything like any of us do on Dixie Highway currently, it doesn't work from a parking perspective, okay? Now, recently I've spoken with Pam about like, you know, I hate to do it, but I, I, I guess it was a couple, few months ago, I asked you, what do you, what recommendation would you make if I were, am I, I, I'm not sure if I'm allowed, but if I were to put, to try to deter the absolute use of my, unlimited use of my parking, putting some kind of structures that are planners or something that would look okay and be a deterrent, make it harder for people just to haphazardly use my parking lot for their businesses, at the expense of, quite frankly, I, I redid my parking lot, I'm the only one who's done, redone my parking lot, and everybody uses it. So I wanna be a good neighbor, I wanna help out, this here is very difficult, okay? And it says, secure funding through grants and local sources, is how this road diet gets done. This road diet, a very important part of the road diet is probably getting rid of that second stoplight in the curb cut there, uh, up there at Arlington and Dixie. I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing that that's what Jay and Mike or whoever, whoever came to me on this are probably gonna recommend, okay? Redo the, uh, redoing the Z, or the Dixie fix, it's gonna be spending money on it. So I was gonna ask if we would be clear, and I think we were, if the city were to, were to, excuse me, pursue the roughly eight hundred thousand dollars we believe it would take, eight hundred to a million, just, just for easy money, let's just call it a million. The city, I mean, it's really, I mean, it's just reality, it's, it's a million dollars, okay? The city would have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars on that, and I can't remember what your road project, your road budget is for a year, but I would tell you if I were still the mayor of Fort Wright, uh, well, I know, I can tell you what they're saying, they're saying we can chip in some more money, because part of what they have on there is another intersection of the Dixie fix from two thousand and three, or whatever it was, that said it had to be addressed. Now, we at Fort Wright, there wasn't a lot of engineering that went into that, so we were a little skeptical about the fix. But Garvey got fixed, McAlpin got fixed, a lot of the stuff out in Earl Langer working its way in that's on that list got fixed, just because it had to be fixed for safety purposes. Fort Wright's hopefully gonna have the opportunity to fix that Fortside intersection, the bridge is gonna fix Kyle's and Dixie, and then that leaves kinda down here. So you can spend eighty or a hundred thousand dollars on another study, one of two studies, you can do this, and I, I'm, I'm not supporting or saying whatever, but if you were gonna spend eighty or a thousand dollars, eighty or a hundred thousand dollars on a study of Dixie highways in general, first of all, I don't know that, you know, you probably have to just do it in your section, 'cause a lot of it was in the originals already taken care of. I don't know that other cities would join in, saying, let's pay, let's split that.
Joe, I was just gonna say that, I have the Dixie fix here.
Yeah.
And a lot of it has been done, you're right.
Oh, it's been done. So if you're gonna spend money on the, on this, on, on another study, or you're gonna spend money on a study for this, and quite frankly, I think I wrote a letter saying, I think I wrote, wrote an email saying, if you're gonna talk about it, spend money with professionals to look at, you know what I mean? And I felt that way, uh, whether it's popular or not, whether I lose votes on this, I don't care. But I do believe that if you can spend eighty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars now, and we know that that's gonna be in any study you do, you know, and the money's available when you have the opportunity to go get it, I think it's negligent not to go get that money, whether we have a project going on or not. My personal opinion on, on how you do that. You guys, it's your city, you do what you wanna do with it, but that's how I would approach it from a financial standpoint. Not many times in this twenty-five years I've been kind of on every side of this deal, have you had the opportunity to put up a hundred to get a, to get nine hundred, and had it be controlled reasonably locally through Catalytic Fund and PDS who gets the money, you know, and it requires a plan, you know, to be tagged, you know? But the time is not, it's not infinite, it's, it's finite. So I think, in closing for me, we'll ask, we'll, we'll sit down for any questions, but we're asking that you reconsider, and I know it's quick, the October, you know, thing, the October, but, but we're asking as developers, if you can't make a decision tonight, that if it was important to you, or any of this is compelling, uh, and if you ask us questions and you leave here feeling like, hey, we think that they're actually being serious, forthright, whatever you, uh, we would ask that you consider giving a special meeting saying, send it out there with the RM changes, because ultimately, they don't make the decision. And then advertise the heck out of it. I'll walk how many cities, how many houses you want me to hang flyers on. We'll pay for the mail, we'll pay for whatever you want to get the word out, okay? We will go fifty times more than the requirement that is there, and to do it, uh, if it was gonna be, if the city would, you know, that's not a bribe, by the way, that's, you know, just kind of, hey, we get it, then it's short notice, we would do what we would have to do if you guys felt compelled to try it, 'cause it would take a special meeting between now and then for you guys to say that. Then it's gonna go, uh, it's gonna go, and they're gonna come back with a recommendation either for or against. You don't have to take what they send back to you. They can send back and say, we recommend that you do this, and then you say, well, guess what, we're just gonna take it as the original zoning that we have now, you know? And it's easy enough to come, to come up with a reason not to accept the recommendation. Happens all the time. So that's what our ask is here, we respect everybody's opinions on it, we appreciate your time, um, we're happy to answer any questions from anywhere, well, it's not our forum, you guys say, say what it is, to be able to do it.
I, I get, go ahead, Troy.
He's probably gonna have to answer.
Listen, I, I went to Notre Dame, my voice never raised my hand. My question, uh, thank you for the presentation, and you mentioned several times that you felt that this was consistent with the presentation that you gave us. I wanna be clear that it was, I think that's important, it was very clear, it's exactly what we discussed. My question is super simple, and if you don't have an answer, that's fine. Is this, and I feel like I asked this when we talked, is this the only solution for this property in your opinion?
Uh, so, uh, two parts, there's, uh, there's the neighborhood commercial zone, so, and, and Joe brought it up, with the way new zoning, the, the Z twenty-one, or even your current zoning before Z twenty-one, the parking requirements for a commercial building there would shrink the building down to where it's so small that it's not a viable product. That's why we looked at the Kane property and the adjacent properties that are also in the, in built insurance, that are also in the neighborhood commercial, to try to be able to get a big enough building with the parking to make it economically viable on the commercial side. On the residential side, um, there's a, density is what, uh, what helps on different, if you're spreading the cost out. So when we, when we're talking about eight duplex units, you're spreading, you know, we, we, the cat's out of the bag, the, the property is around five hundred twenty-five thousand. So if you're spreading, you got five hundred twenty-five thousand over eight units versus twenty, forty units, you can, you can do the math pretty quick, even Mike, I'm a cupcake grad too, and I can, I can do that. So, and also the, uh, the other side, it is a for rent product. So, and, and Joe talked about this very well at their, at our meeting, uh, last Monday, is, uh, a long-term investment, uh, on a rental project, uh, you can absorb quite a bit more costs because you're spreading it out over a longer period of time. So if we look at it as a for sale product, you're having to absorb those costs immediately and then make those sales very quickly on the lot sales or on the home sales to be able to make the project work. So, uh, I'm, I'm involved in, with Mark on projects in Fort Mitchell and Crescent Springs that are for sale with Fisher Homes. I'm also involved with Dries Homes on Town and Projects in Cincinnati. And, uh, and the amount of units here, there's just a number issues, the amount of units that we could fit with their product, uh, and then what the cost would become on the lots became too high for them to make the projects work. So, uh, I, when I, when I say Fisher Homes and Dries Homes, I work with them primarily because they finish projects out, they do get through projects quick to make it financially viable. So, um, so we did, we looked at it as a for sale, couldn't make the economics work. So that's where we went to the for rent, the economics didn't work because of the cost, the costs were so high. So the for rent allowed us, and we would, it would be a long-term hold for us. I'm also have a property management company based out of Fort Wright, we, we manage properties just like this throughout Northern Kentucky, so a long-term hold to be able to spread those costs out over a longer period of time. So, and I think I did, I mentioned the, the rent at the meeting, and it's from eighteen hundred to twenty-seven hundred dollars a month, so it's not, it's not a small number for rent, so it's.
And we're not interested in subsidized housing. Well, I guess we're probably fair enough to say.
Eighteen hundred to twenty-seven hundred is not subsidized.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're going for a high-end product that is representative of what needs to happen.
And, and it is, both products I've built personally, one in Fort Mitchell, and is the addition to, it's the old Van Iver apartment zone by Urban Beck, we bought them in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, and it's called Reserves of Fort Mitchell, it's a brand of drawbridge development, uh, which I'm also involved in. And, uh, the, the other project is Aspen Pine Apartments and Townhomes up in Wilder, overlooking the city. So these are the townhomes all the way at the end, if you do, if you don't wanna drive there, you can just do Google Earth and do, uh, street deals. But they're both units that we built, they're larger square footage than what you typically see on the market, but that's because it's Park Hills, um, it's, this is not, Park Hills, uh, at least on, on a project like this, demand's a little bit higher, and, um, which, as you see by the rent, that's, so, long answer to that, but we, we did do our due diligence, and we looked at a bunch of different options for this property. The Arlington reroute was also part of it, and the Arlington reroute does, even though the commercial doesn't get developed right away, in the future, if Kane chiropractic, if built insurance, if that, if that ends up becoming available, and either us or another developer wants to develop it, they would have access off of a lighted intersection on Arlington versus Hammond to use all those curb cuts. So that was a thought process there. It's, it's in a perfect thought process, no, but it's, it, that was what we were thinking of.
No, thank you, and I also wanted to, and I appreciate what you said about the communication, just putting something on Cincinnati dot com or Lincoln K Y, is, I don't, you can see why it's important to, to communicate these things, why you've had eighteen extra people that weren't on your list show up to the meeting, because it's critically important, and people, you know, consume information differently now, I'm telling you right now, I'm not gonna look at a classified for anything. You know, I'm, I'm not gonna dig through my email, I'm not the best at it, it takes me a while, so.
Emily, can I, can I say something real quick, so, so people aren't offended that they didn't get a?
Yeah, yeah.
A flyer. Whoever was down there, I mean, I've got, it's like this place, it's limited space.
Yeah.
So I took the first sixty houses that are most adjacent to the project to deliver this, this paper to, there was no picking winner and loser, so who gets whatever, it was who's gonna be the most closely, you know, impacted, uh, and what kind of space it, I think, you know, you never, you might get five people, we might get, you know, we might get?
Sixty.
Sixty, you know, so that's why, I just wanna make sure nobody feels like we were trying not to.
And makes sense, thank you.
Joe, I, maybe this is for you, Joe, or you, Greg?
Yeah.
You know, uh, when you all had the meeting, we were told from the mayor by an email and a text that we were not allowed to attend, 'cause I've had a couple residents, excuse me, say, Greg, why weren't you at that meeting? Well, we were told not to, because it might be a quorum. What was the majority of the feedback? Was it positive, a lot of questions, a little bit more negative?
No, it was, it was, two things, I go, I do, I'm a developer by trade, so I do a lot of meetings with residents and a lot of meetings with councils, with townships, with counties. A lot of those meetings get heated, non-professional, are difficult, it was none of those. Everybody there was considerate, everybody's time, um, even when some, when somebody rose, raised their hand first, uh, they were considerate of that, of their questions, everybody had their time to speak, hopefully everybody had their time to speak, but, um, it was generally positive. There were, the, the good thing about it, there was feedback of, here's what we think we, that you can do to improve it, or here's our issues with what you're proposing around the rental project. Two emails that I received were in opposition to that being for rent. I, I responded and explained why our thought process by, for rent. The good thing about the meeting was that it, the, the meeting's there to let everybody air, uh, any issues they have with it, so, I mean, some of the, I, I wrote down a couple of the, the concerns, uh, or one, some of the suggestions is that, one of them was that, I wrote down a sense of place on Dixie, and it, I think it was, it was going towards that this is kind of the Dixie Highway entry. that this is kind of the Dixie Highway entry into Park Hills. And that, there's those stone monuments that are on Arlington existing there. I know there's been, I've had a number of people talk about, can we, can we move those there, or can we rebuild them? I don't think I can rebuild them to make them look like that, because those were built a long time ago. Moving them may be difficult, but we can do our best with that. But it was, it was a very, there was, there was positive feedback. I think the reroute of Arlington makes sense. I mean, it's hard, it makes sense with the way Arlington is right now. You know, there was concern that maybe there'd be more trucks that would take that route because it's easier. You know, that's not something that we can really control. That's kind of a city, you know, on the police, police side to control. And then there was questions about, I said again, why can't it be for sale? Why, why does it have to be for rent? So, hopefully, I explained that well. But the meeting, it was, it was productive. Everybody there was professional and courteous. So, that, that was the best part about it for me, is that I was, there was nobody yelling at us. They were telling us why they didn't like it. And they were articulating why they didn't like it. But they were professional about it.
And I, I think that kind of a common theme was green space. I mean, the reality is, if somebody buys this piece of property, okay, unless they're buying it specifically to keep those trees there, those trees, for the most part, are coming down. You can't make sense of either side of that residential or commercial without losing some, a lot, a few trees. And I think Mark said it well at the meeting. I think right now, it's like a 20-foot, you know, buffer. We got it on there. It's 25-foot, I believe.
You have it on here, it's 25?
25 feet. But I think the requirement is like 20.
Other than Z-21, yes.
Other than Z-21. But we don't want to take out any more trees than we would have to. And the people who would be living in here would want the buffer just as much as Mrs. Powers and the people up on top of the hill would want it. And, you know, and I've told people who, who are in my building down in Park, down here in Park, it's where, on 1450, I, you know, I have a, a door that goes out onto my roof. And I actually like to walk around on my roof and talk on my phone. And, and on my roof, I can't see houses behind me. And it's the same ridge that you have at Sashon Gardens. So, the, I think the people on there, if, in the event that in the fall, I guess, would be the least likely that you could see something. You'd be seeing asphalt shingle buildings and not, you know, barricade walls with mechanicals and looking in the windows and stuff like that. I, I'm not saying that people will be left one or the other. We're gonna try to create as much of an atmosphere that'll get that higher rent, which robby not's privacy in, in whatever will be.
In Park Hills.
In Park Hills, yeah. But green space is definitely, and so we're very, we're very cognizant of that.
Thanks for taking my question. I want to concur with Emily. I think that the notice is sort of a minimum threshold. So, I think it's really good that the city expand that and do what we can, that everybody gets an opportunity with our website, with, you know, what, there's all kinds of mediums there that we talk about using. So, that's a positive. And you've addressed some of my questions, and I basically have two. These come to me from residents, and, and, you know, I concur with them. You mentioned that this will now be the main entrance from Dixie Highway into Park Hills. And we want it to look great. We want it to look really good. We are entering our centennial year. So, our city will be 100 years old. Those columns are 100 years old. They were there before homes were built. So, we, I and many people-
I say they look good there.
They do.
Would really like to see those moved. And, and they, they moved that stone church out of, of difficult spot in Latonia to Thomas More University. I know you can do it. So, I think it would be beautiful to relocate those to the new street entrance and preserve them. I think they carry a lot of the beauty of Park Hills. I would hope that the facade of these buildings, and many people have asked me about that, could pick up the character of Park Hills, either in the Neo-Tutor architecture, or the, the kind of iconic stonework that is part of the architecture of Park Hills. I brought with me a, this is hard to see because it's like a copy of a copy of a copy, and I'll pass it to Council. This is a building that was designed by Dee Collins Lee, who was the founder of Park Hills, that he intended to build, actually on Hamilton Road along the Trelawney. But the Great Depression intervened, and this was never built. But I'm not suggesting the size or the scope, but the detail. The, the architecture's beautiful. And if we could pick up some of that and the character of these buildings, I think it would make the entrance very nice. But it would also enhance, I think, the value of these buildings, or give them a distinctive quality. And we would really like to see that. My second point is the green space. I think it's important. I think it's important to, and I know when you build this, you're gonna have to come, there's gonna be a lot of destruction there. I understand that. But I would like for us to have an agreement where we repopulate that area with a combination of evergreens and indigenous trees, so that we have a beautiful green space that both sides of that will enjoy. And I think it will enhance the property values on both sides, both the abutting property owners and this project. I'm glad that you clarified that this is not subsidized, because social media is a wonderful thing when it's truthful. When it's not truthful, it's a damaging thing. And there's a little, you know, so I'm glad you clarified that. That's pretty much it. So, is that possibility on the character of the buildings?
Absolutely.
That's important to us. Excellent. That's really good to hear. And I'll pass this around to Council. And Julie, I'll give one to you. We could put it on our website. It is really hard to see because it comes out of a history thing. But the design of it's interesting. So, maybe you guys can share. Sarah has a question, too.
Yeah.
All right.
Real quick, I did, just on the, on the green space, on repopulating the buffer, is that, is that, that's what we're talking about? So, I, and, and my budget. So, we put together budgets for these to make sure that they're financially viable. So, my budget, I just was looking at it today, there were $75,000 in there for landscaping.
Oh, wow.
So, that, this is, this, it's a, it's a 2, 1.980.
Right. Yeah, that's-
So, there, so there's a large amount in there for landscaping. So, it's-
That's good, too.
Mrs. Powers, and, and Joe talked about, our conversation with her, well, one of the most important things for her is she has that, the pool or backyard, where she has her grandkids there.
Right.
And she wanted to make sure that that privacy was maintained. So, in the Z-21, you'll notice there's a, that there's two options. When you're abutting a residential property like hers, there's either a fence and landscaping, or heavy landscaping. And her pick, when I brought, when I said the same thing to her, was fence with landscaping. So, that, that was really big for her, that she maintained.
Well, when we did Walworth, we, part of our settlement agreement with Mr. Earl involved landscaping in these zones. And we paid a lot of attention to it, and it was very successful. And remains so to this day. So, I mean, we used a layering process with evergreens and then indigenous trees. It worked out very well.
Sure. I don't, I don't know if we mentioned it, I'm sorry, Sarah, real quick, because it goes along with this. The detention's down there in the front, in the front, on the commercial spot. And right now, it's an above-ground detention, which is gonna require us to do some landscaping and stuff there anyway. And the reason it's above ground is because that's where everything's gonna be coming from. You know, that's where the water boy, I mean, I'm not an engineer, but the water boy would have come down. And it's, it reserves the, the opportunity for, if that ends up going commercial farther south through, through King or Burger Insurance or wherever, then that detention could be put underground like they do in modern times now, and it can be built upon, you know? So, right now, it's gonna be landscape, green space, and open detention.
Great. My question is, if the grant that, that we have heard about, and certainly we've, we've talked about on the Economic Development Committee as well, if we're not able to secure that, what happens with the road plan?
Doesn't happen. At least with those funds. So, the road, for a public road, that to be built, there's the retaining wall behind the, the, the city building, or the police department there. And then all that utility work to get that in. And there's a light to eliminate, and then a new light on Dixie to be redone. That cost for, for a developer to pay that, you wouldn't be able to do it financially unless there was quite a bit more units on here. But then, you put more units on here, you don't have enough parking. So, it's, it's a, you know, fine balance there.
If you can, if you can do, and you're doing a private road, yeah, when you start a subdivision standard road into development.
Yeah, we would have to do a private road going in. And probably the opportunity on, to get the road done without those funds would be very difficult. It would, it would be impossible for a developer to shore those funds. The city, if they wanted to pay for it, the city could go and not use those funds and build a road themselves. But it's, you know, that million dollars is still there.
Okay. So, when I hear that, I think, you know, it sounds like we would have to be doing a lot of things very quickly to make that happen. And my concern would just be, like, that it would be a lot harder for us to accomplish this at the same time if we don't have that grant. And what would happen, let's, you know, I'm just thinking sort of outside of the box. But if we change the zoning but didn't have the grant, then you could presumably build a road into, build these properties. But then we wouldn't get, you know, we wouldn't be able, like, I guess the question then becomes about the swap and the appraisal. Like, there are a lot of, I don't like it when people say this, but there are a lot of moving parts, right?
There are.
So, you know, I think that there are several, like, the timing of all of this is just gonna have to be, you know, really thought of. Because I don't know if we can move that fast. You know, we have to kind of think about how, how we can make these things happen. So, we might, you know, need some, some more minds on that part.
Yeah, I think the, I think you're gonna wanna know you have the funds before you zone it. Like, so, if you're gonna apply for the funds, you apply for them now. With, because the, saying you, you go down the road in, in two months, that, like, this, this, this is not what the city wants. This is, this project is not what the city wants. We don't, we don't want to do it. And you tell the county, we don't want the funds anywhere. That, you're not obligated to that 10%, unless you receive the funds to do the work. So, if you-
But you also don't get the money.
But independence at one point, I think, was, they didn't have their project, they, they wanted to stop a project. And basically, the rules are, there has to be a project. So, I think, right, right. I think the order of operations is, either we hate the project or we don't. Tell us to go, whatever. And quite frankly, I mean, I know everybody in this room. If they came and they said, they say, we hate it, get out of here. This is business for me. I don't care. You know, I'm still friends with people in the room. I, you know, I operate businesses very retail. And I'm walking to other people's homes and have my, not my project, not my product. And I'm fine with it, you know? So, we would really, we really think it's a good project. But, you know, if you have a project to go to them with, you're not losing any time to your game time. It's the same that I'm talking about with the recommendation coming back. I think it's, it's important that if you, if, if the relocation is important to you, and I'm not telling you to be, for it to be important. But if it is important to you, and you think that this, you're not telling us to get out of here, I think it's worthwhile to take the project, pursue the funds, see if you can get it. And, and then you have three years to get this project done, this project. And then you have to get, or you have to give them, I think it's three years. I might have just spoken out loud. But it's a decent amount of time-
I think it is three years.
-that you, that you have to execute the project that you submitted. Okay? So, if you, if you're worried about timing for the funds, you know, yes. The only concern of, once again, the only concern about the funds is the fact that you got 19 cities vying for it. And I don't know, I mean, I actually think it's a great program, and I hope that Senator McDaniel and/or the people down in Frankfurt are able to come up with more money and send it back up this way, whether, you know, to Dixie Highway. Because I honestly think, all the years that I've been trying, sitting in seats like this, as Mayor Fort Wright, I mean, it drives me nuts that there's a hotel standing there that's caused so many problems for Fort Wright. And I've been working on that for 20 years. Okay? I actually think that these are the kind of things that are gonna get that done. And I hope that if Fort Wright doesn't get it in this cycle, that there's another cycle that will help in, in the development. They're, struggling with the development part of it. You know, there's, there's a couple of things swirling around there that might, that are likely to happen. But it's, it's really about the time and the money.
And, and I think I'm seeing on this plan, if I understand it, sidewalks are on this road.
Yeah.
If this is a public road, subdivision standard sidewalks, right?
Right.
Okay. That's important, because, I mean, pedestrian safety is an issue I know in every city. It really is here. So-
To be clear, so, when, if the funds are acquired or approved, the city then would go out to bid for the road. So, that's separate from the rental part of the development. The, the, the city goes out in an R or, or, does, gives proposals, gets bids, requests for bids for the project. So, it's a city project. It's not, the funds don't go to the developer, and then we build the road. The funds go to the city, and it's administered by the city for the public. So, so the way that it's designed, that's the, the city designs it with the engineer, whoever the engineer is, goes out for bid, gets built by a contractor that has submitted a bid that the city's accepted. So, the, in, on public streets in Kent County, sidewalks on both sides are standard. It's up to the city if they want to do that. But that's, that's standard in, in the city. But an example would be Ford Side Drive. When, Fort Mitchell, we built Ford Side Drive in front of my grandparents' house. Sidewalks came on one side. There's a lot of sidewalks on the left-hand side that you want up, or on the right-hand side. But that was because the city decided to keep it how it was. Here, the city could decide, we want to do it on, on a grid standard, we want to do sidewalks on both sides, and bring it all the way out.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sort of tag onto that just a little bit, too. You know, thinking about the road plan and, and sidewalks and those sorts of details. I'm curious about, you know, the, the connection with the existing, like, new, new to us, newer to us, city building. And on this plan, there's a parking lot and some other details there. And I'm curious, I've realized that this is like, very forward-thinking. But is that included in what your estimate for the million dollars is? Or would, would that be something different?
Yes. So, if it was, it's a lot simpler, the idea around that was a lot simpler than, there, because Arlington would be abandoned in that area, there's room there then for parking. So, that, that was me just adding it to the plan. There was no other thought process around it of-
Is what would make the most sense with the road.
Right there. While, while the funds are, the thought was, is when you're applying for the funds, you include that into the scope, so that you don't have to come out of, you're already coming out of pocket for 10%. So, the thought was, is include that in the proposal, and then use those funds to do that. Because it, you know, it, it is part of the larger global project. So, that was the thought around it. And I was, my thought was, more parking is always better. That parking lot's small already. So, that was, that was the only thought around it. There wasn't, you know, any other, anything other than that.
I think I was just curious about the cost. And I guess, Julie, we wouldn't know until our engineer-
It would have to be engineer.
Does the work.
Yeah. What I, what I'm, you know, what I'm estimating, and I, Steve Burling, he's a separate side of the Burling family, but we do a lot of, did a lot of engineering for us. Coming through, trying to think of how much this thing costs. When I do development work, it's 1,500 dollars a meter per street. But for a city, it's a lot more. It just costs the, the government a lot more to do things. So, we tacked on a little more there and did some estimates on the parking. It's, this is not, this is a concept plan. So, when the engineers get about, so I'm a, I'm a Blackman history major. So, so, like, I'm not an engineer. I'm good at drawing stuff. When the engineers get involved, they do a lot better job than I would.
Okay. I'm sorry that we're backpedaling a little bit, but the land swap?
Yes.
How does that work?
Okay. So, your attorney would, knows it a lot better than I do. But essentially, your appraisals would be, would happen on both, both properties. If they're, if they're valued equally- If they're, if they're valued equally, then you could use some sort of land swap there. If there's a difference in value, the lower party would have to come up with the difference, or the value, or the higher, the lower party would have to come up with.
Your act, the, the debts would be factored into the money then.
Yeah. I mean, my, I, the idea type would be is hopefully that they're valued at the same amount, which makes it a lot easier, but that's the public process, you have to do the appraisals and they come up with a fair market value for them.
So one traffic light would go away entirely?
Yes.
And then we have to, the states involved in that and okay.
Correct, yep.
And I'd like to add, Economic Development had brought to me about the the grant money and I did look into that quite a while ago before I ever knew anything you were doing. And he said, oh, you have to have a project to do it. So I thought, well, we're just probably not gonna do anything, but they they did have a little bit left and that's all I know. He said, you need a project behind it, so you're, you're correct about that.
Yeah, and I, quite frankly, I don't know what the balance is, but I, I know that I saw a million, one point three eight hundred so far. And I, and I'm knowledgeable about what's going on in Fort Wright because it's my town.
You have a question?
Yeah.
I just wanna clarify, because I, I thought at the meeting, and I may have missed it, so you guys, the Arlington straightening out or whatever, that's not necessary for you to build the project. You are allowed to enter off of Dixie as it is now, or did I hear?
Not, not this. So, but we, we could enter off the property as it's done currently off of Dixie.
To the commercial and the R.
Through the commercial and then to the the R.
But in order to, to, in order to get the RM designation approved or this density approved within the RU, the Arlington road has to happen as well? I thought that's what you said at the meeting, that they, that, I don't know who the ruling body is, but that they had trouble with all the curb cuts. And so a project of this density, they didn't want a bunch of cars with both of those lights right there entering. But I mean, I, that's a good question, so.
I wouldn't have said that, it was, yeah, no, it's a, no, the Arlington reroute, so the idea of the, being able to do the Arlington reroute requires a project.
I understand that.
So that, that, that was the whole.
But your project doesn't require the Arlington reroute?
We couldn't do this project. Because the, because the, the current zoning doesn't allow, it only allows duplexes.
Okay.
Well, I think there's a good question there, I'm gonna tag onto that, because if we, let's say the zoning was changed and, but we didn't get the grant, you know, or something like this, then could you essentially, would you be able to build this without the Arlington change?
Well, I would think on the city side, you would wanna know you had the grant before you changed the zoning.
Of course, of course, yeah.
I, I mean, if I read your shoes, I can say.
Well, I think, but I think what she's saying is if the zoning was changed and then the grant fell through and you brought the street straight in, isn't that what you're saying, that can you still do what you want?
Yeah, because you would, you would end up, you'd have to abide by the density requirements. Of course, you know, the portion of the site is the public against this power, is that city own property. So we wouldn't, you wouldn't, unless you sold it to us, we wouldn't, you know, do those units. So the units on the other side, if they fit within that, which we plan, they fit within that new zone or the, the redone zone, we could do it on a prime drive, yes.
I think bottom line, the city does want the assurance that the grant is there.
Oh, absolutely, that's the first step.
Yeah, I, so I, for us, this road coming through is important for this development to be able to, the rents that I'm citing, to be able to create a small neighborhood there that feels like something. So the road coming through is important for us, for what we're proposing here. Without that road, then you're bringing a private road in that's narrow, that's, you know, it, it doesn't get the feel that this does. This is a big splash on Dixie Highway, so.
Speaking of splash.
Yeah.
I heard there was a vernal spring or some body of water, can you talk about that? Back there?
Yeah, I don't know what, I, I heard that word thrown out, I don't know what a vernal spring is.
I'm not really sure either.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a, a body of water that re, I guess re-wets itself in the spring?
So it wasn't.
I just did chat G P T when the guy mentioned it in the meeting and asked, I didn't know what it was either.
Literally science.
Yeah. It was an internation.
One of the most useful things I've found with, is, is when you don't know something, it used to be you had to go to Google and then you had to scroll through every website. Now Chat G P does it all for you.
That's what he said.
So I don't, it is a, there's a drainage way that comes through there. I was, I went and did some clearing for the, the geotechnical engineer to come in and do some blowings. And I was down there with, I did it myself with one of my machines, and it wasn't wet when I was down in there. I don't know the answer if it's a, I don't know what a vernal wet lens is or a vernal spring. But the water would be, there's, there's been a lot of stormwater work that has been done up on Aberdeen and so it's diverted some water that used to go through that. When we developed the site, the engineer, which will be Burling engineers, has to account for any water that's coming onto the site and then it has to be directed into that detention basin. So if there's water coming through there, which it, which it sounds like there is, that has to be diverted into a detention basin on our site. And then it has to be treated, the water has to be treated through water quality measures before it's released into the stormwater system. So that, the best way I can answer it, I don't, I'm not sure what a vernal spring is.
You had mentioned behind the police building that the retaining wall had to be there, is that part of the, the city's responsibility to put the road in?
Well, there's certainly a wall there now, there's a retaining wall, I think the city put a retaining wall in a number of years ago.
So there's no additional?
It would be a more substantial.
There could be a more substantial retaining wall there, that would be part of the road project.
Be part of the road project.
Oh, that.
It'd be part of the grant.
The grant, yeah.
If we, if we get the grant.
If we get the grant.
If this would not happen, agreement on the zoning change is not gonna happen.
Unless the grant.
Unless the grant comes through. But is that?
And the more information you guys would have about the project, like the, the more engineering estimates, the more likely that you might, you may get the number that you need on the grant. You know, obviously, if you go there with some information, we're throwing out the eight hundred because that's kind of.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred doesn't know yet, because that's where we thought it's gonna land. And so with true numbers, you know, Catalytic and P D S, who are basically arbit, the arbiters of that, will probably be more likely to kind of be more generous, I guess.
And your city engineer is Jay Mayer.
Right, this is something Jay could.
He did say, he talked to you and he, he thought it was.
He told me a lot.
Closer to a million.
That's what he told me.
Yeah.
I told him eight hundred and he said, oh, it may be getting closer to a million. And I listened to him, he's doing our engineering on the Dorver Bridge project, which is a massive amount of infrastructure. So he's right in the middle of all that, of public infrastructure all the time. So he, and I think he's, he's looked at this over the years.
Yeah. He was involved in the studies as well.
Right, right. So he would, he knows a heck of a lot better than I do, as a Latin history major, so just I defer to him.
Right.
You have another question?
Yeah, just a comment too, I think one other theme that was tossed around, I can't remember if it was tossed around during the meeting itself or in kind of after meetings, you know, just by conversations, but one of the anxieties of this, what if we realigned Arlington question, is what if that happens at the same time that Amsterdam's worked on and the bridge is replaced? Can we, are we gonna be in quarantine in Park Hills? And I know that's a question that no one can answer. Those are projects that are like, you know, if anyone could answer those questions on timeline, they'd win a million bucks right there. But when I hear the number of million bucks, I think that's gonna seem like nothing in cost compared to the headache of if all throws, all three things happen at the same time and then the pressure on traffic enforcement in our small town with a small department, living on the one one-way street in Park Hills, that already sometimes takes a hit when there is any kind of hiccup on Dixie. And again, I mean, moving parts, so many unknowns, but Murphy's Law makes nerves.
So, so I would, I would commit, and quite frankly, I got off of a committee that I was on because I just have time to keep up with it. But the bridge project is gonna be a series of small projects. Right, right now, a friend of mine, they're Spartan Construction, and he's the first one to put basically a shovel in the ground on the Ohio side on some infrastructure, just some, I think, I think it's fiber. And so there's that project. I think that there's gonna be a lot of different small projects that will create small inconveniences before you have a really large. And I think that there's probably a way for us or for the city, whoever, I'm willing to do some homework on it, to kind of see the timeline as they see it. I know the timeline keeps getting pushed back for even the start just because, you know, there's so much environmental stuff that had to be done and all kinds of, all kinds of contractual stuff to make sure that all the requirements of, of the contractors are being met. So I'm guessing, you know, that Dixie Highway, and quite frankly, I'm concerned about it because that's where I'm, I'm, I'm every day. Actually, we, we're gonna hand out like, you know, huggies and stuff like that while the traffic stops, I think, but, but I'm concerned about it because of that. And I think that it's gonna be a phased thing that I don't, it's all really about timing, you know? If you say we like the project, you get it engineered, the money's ready to go. I mean, there's, the money's sitting there. It's not, and it's very, it's very local decision making is what's the difference of this and any grants you're talking about where you'd be competing for funds across the state or whatever. It's intentionally here, so from a timing, you could probably beat the bridge to punch is what I'm getting at, but I don't know.
I, I, it's funny, I was, I was talking to you about this earlier. So there was a, the road improvement project where I live and it was the route that my wife took our kids to school, I got three young girls. And it's the route that she took them to school, and it shut down that route. So the only other route was fighting traffic to get the kids to school, probably an extra ten minutes to get the kids to school. And I, and every morning I would get a call, she was so mad about it, I can't believe I had to do this, I would get a call the next morning, the next morning, the next morning. But if actually the road project was done, I didn't get the calls anymore. And actually, she would tell me, oh, my gosh, this is so much better. So it, it, I, I took the complaints for the calls for months as this, and it was, and you know, they put the sign up that says it's gonna, we're starting this date, it's gonna be done this date, and it wasn't done that date. And then they put another sign up and says, well, it's gonna be done this date, and so my wife would tell me, well, they says it's gonna be done this date, and then they changed it, and then I got more complaints about that. But once it was done, my point to that is, it is, it is painful for a period of time, but for once it's done, we hope that this will, then you'll drive on it and you'll say, oh, my gosh, this is so much better than having to take that ninety degree turn, come down that hill, especially in winter, and be, be scared of ice or anything else and sliding in a Dixie highway to where then you have Arlington, a wider road that you're able to get out on a Dixie a lot safer. So at least that's, my personal experience with it was, was painful for a period of time, but then, once it was done, it was a lot better.
Well, hopefully if we get a new traffic light, it will be better timing.
Yes.
Those lights are like timed with a calendar, I mean, you can sit there for a day before they think.
I just learned at the Dorver site that there's artificial intelligence timing on lights. I didn't know that that was a thing, but I guess artificial intelligence is everywhere. And so at the Dorver, at the Royal Drive, the Buttermilk intersection, it will adjust timing based on, it'll count, it'll count stacking and adjust timing based on periods a day without the state having to go do a handling, so for what it's worth.
Yes, sir.
I have a bunch of questions.
Sure.
First of all, thank you for coming here to be able to take questions from residents. You said you're in here, are wanting to do this project for business, but ideally we can create a win-win for the city as well. So could you expand a bit on how you see this project benefiting the city, whether that's more tax revenue or having people right next to the business district who can shop at the businesses there and support them, such stuff?
So. He said it, he kind of said it.
Yeah.
He basically said what the, some of the reasons.
From, from my perspective, what I get to watch every day at fourteen fifty Dixie Highway is, like I said, a great small business texting me and finkies, people coming and going there by parking in my parking lot because I let them park in my parking lot. I think that if you ask Tracy, does she wish she had more parking? If you ask Ron, does he wish he had more parking? They'd all say yes. But the reality is, they're not gonna get it, not under current circumstances. Why do I say that? Well, what would be cool if you had twenty-four customers walking distance to these small businesses that rely on local business, okay? Mine is a destination business with a parking lot. I'm not gonna have somebody walk down from these apartments and say I'd like to buy cabinets or grant, it's not gonna benefit me in that, in that respect. But, but, but as far, when you're looking at economic development and, and the win-win, the win-win for me is the, is rerouting the traffic and having, having something that makes more sense. Obviously, if, if we're successful and put this together and we actually make money on it, we win that way. I think the city also has a good development that supports a walkable business district with bodies in the walking district, you know? You see all that, what makes these urban cores so successful is you have a good mix of people living amongst the businesses that service these people, you know? So you got, you got, you know, you got a coffee shop, you got a small deli or whatever, you know, you got the YOLO there, I mean, all of that supports what we're doing and this supports everything down there. So it's a win-win from an economic development standpoint. It's a win for us as a developer, it's a win for the city, and by the way, the larger community, when you think about the traffic light situation, it, that's what we're talking about. I mean, there's levels of it that just make sense. Is there stuff that, is, are there losses? Yeah, there's probably, depending on whose perspective you look at it from, there's like, you know, unfortunately, not everybody gets everything.
So investment, I don't know what the property's worth now, but the, our total investment's somewhere from four and a half to five million. So property value, there's a significant increase in property value. I, I typically don't bring that up in public hearings because I, you know, I think it's more, I want, I wanna, I want them to, I want buy-in on us as a developer and the products we're gonna produce, but there is a, there is obviously a tax increase, property tax increase for.
Yeah. And it sounds like you've gone through a very strenuous process with talking to the council, hosting the session on your business, handing out flyers. Do you normally go through such processes?
I'm gonna say, he probably does. We talked about it early on. When we first started talking, and when we were talking to the council, I think we said we wanna get, not buy-in, but we wanna speak to the council and then, so there's a, there's a point where you're too, too quick out of the gate, you know, and you start talking to people and, and then you start creating a hornet's nest that maybe doesn't have to happen. So you, we've been kind of just taking it, we've been trying to be very thoughtful about the process and very thoughtful about, you know, because we did ask, quite frankly, I think we asked that you guys keep it to yourselves until we got to talk to everybody here. And then, and then, and then we would talk through it as we go. And then, because sometimes stuff like this, because there's, there's anxiety back and forth, I, I mean, I'm reading it, you know? So, so when it was time and we thought it was time to be able to go and get, and get the word out, yeah, I mean, we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna have answers. We didn't wanna not have answers, let's put it that way. By the way, we still don't have all the answers, you know, there, the land swap thing, you know, we'll, you know, we'll jump off that bridge when we get to it, you know, because we just wanna get to the bridge right now, you know what I mean, so.
So are there similar processes for your other developments?
I, I do, so Joe's not, Joe.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not specifically a developer. I invest in developments, he does developments.
So, yeah, so it's, one of the most difficult things is we go into a public hearing and the residents that are there is the first time they've seen it. So it, it is, I, I always try to have meetings with residents beforehand, it's hard because you have to get word out and I don't know, most of the residents luckily Joe walked around with letters, but I, I have a project in Van Daley, Ohio tomorrow, but I, I've residents four times, they not like the plan, I revised it, not like the plan, revised it, and we're finally do a plan that the residents like. So I've done it there, I've done it in Deerfield Township, did it in Fort Mitchell.
Any other developments you've done in Park Hills?
I have not.
Okay.
No, no. I have not, no, no.
So can I, can I just say, I've sat at those chairs for a very, very long time, and I've had to kind of consider exactly what they're considering. I will say that early on, Greg was, we're going to get the neighbors together, and I agree with it. When I'm at that table, when I was over on that side, specifically in Fort Wright, because that's where the most opportunity was, is not everybody does that. Oftentimes, a lot of times, residents find out in here at the public hearing. If they hear, if they read NKY dot com, or Cincinnati dot com, I mean, you know, he's thought, his family's the third generation, they've done this, they've been there, done that. A lot of times, people, like, I would venture to say that I know at least three people who have looked at this site. And I bet nobody heard about it. They didn't get far enough to have the conversation.
You had mentioned that pre-standing homes wouldn't be possible due to the, I guess, low profit margin. Why couldn't these townhomes be sellable?
Yes, it's not because of the low profit margin.
Okay.
So I don't, we don't, I don't look at projects that, I have a profit margin. Yeah, so I have a profit margin that I look at, that's a standard profit margin for any development I look at. And then I solve for a lot price. So we solve for a lot price to sell it to a Fisher or a Dries, and that lot price was too high for them to be able to then go sell units and make them be successful on their end on home building side. So we looked at it for that, and so your question was, why couldn't these be for sale?
Right, because you had said it was based on their laws, that the kinds of homes they build would be too big for the space and how much, you know, it would cost. But for something smaller like this, why couldn't these be sold?
The same reason that it didn't work for the Dries and Fisher. So this is not their product, this is a product that I've built, and it's a for-rent product. So it's not, it's not a product that was built for sale. It's, there's, when we, like I explained before, on the costs, the costs are high on the front end. If you spread that out over a long-term investment with rents that we're proposing, then that's how you make the project work.
And it's not a per lot at that point, you know, on the rent, then you're door per door. What's the cost for, you know, for each unit, you know, as opposed to each lot for a house? So density, density cures a lot of ails.
I'm just wondering about the community deal of Park Hills, I'm sorry. Oh, no, go ahead. Oh, just do more rental properties, speak to the identity of Park Hills, especially if you're entering. It's sort of like the first thing that you see as you're, you know, entering the space.
So do they, your question is, do they speak to Park, I mean, I guess that.
Well, it's not necessarily a question for you, sir, I'm sorry. But I guess it's just more the room at large and the city council.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, is there, do you know how many rentals there, what percentage of rentals Deerfield is?
Is that something that you?
Yes, we do know that, yeah.
Okay.
It's averaged, in the 16 years I've served, it's been about 49% rental.
That's pretty high.
And what I wanted to say, though, in my experience of finance and real estate that I've been in, just because these are rentals for your cash flow situation and the expense, like you say, is not to say that at some future time, they can't be sold individually, because I know that's happened many places in many areas.
Yeah, that wouldn't, if they would have to be sold, that'd have to be a pretty bad situation. So I think that, your question is about the character of Park Hills coming in.
Because I love the character of Park Hills.
Yeah, and I mean, I think rental product can be, has very nice character. I mean, we're proposing very high rents for them, higher rents than what most people are paying on a per-monthly basis for the mortgage. So, so, and then we have, because of our investment, we have really vested interest in maintaining this, our investment. So what an important thing I brought up is that the property manager would be me, my company, based out of Fort Wright. So we manage properties throughout Northern Kentucky and Cincinnati that are our own, single-family, multifamily, industrial, self-storage facilities. And we manage them, the reason we manage them is we want to maintain our investment.
Would there be amenities of it? Like, would you be putting in a pool or a gym or anything like that?
Not for 24 units, usually you need somewhere around 100 to 125 units to be able to spend that kind of money on amenities. So the amenity is Park Hills and the ability to get downtown, the location is the amenity for this project, yeah.
If I could just add to what you said, though, I share your concern about that, which is why I.
I appreciate your comments about.
Yeah, so I, I think that's an important issue. It is the main entry up at Dixie Highway, and I think all of us benefit by these properties sharing the character of Park Hills.
Let me be clear, the property maintenance is performed on the whole project versus individually by whoever's renting those units. So, you know, landscape maintenance, exterior maintenance is performed by the owner of the property, not the individual renters. So it's a difference between when you have a single-family rental, where whoever's renting it is maintaining the exterior or not maintaining the exterior. So in this case, we're maintaining everything there.
So, we have this blueprint, I suppose. I'm not familiar with that.
That's good enough.
But when, so if this road were developed, and you're entering, are you seeing the sides of the buildings? Okay, then would there be any tree line in front of that, or would you just see the sideline of the buildings?
That's the plan.
Okay.
There's architectural things we can do to the sides of the buildings. For example, you've sometimes gone by houses where there's no windows on the side, and you can tell the difference between a house that has no windows on the side and one that has windows. Small little thing that you do, landscaping on the side versus just seeing foundation wall. So those little things, so that's our entry too. So we're renting these, we're meeting prospective people that want to rent these, and we want it to look good coming in.
Curb appeal.
Curb appeal is a good way to put it. I mean, it's, we're selling a widget like anybody else. And so that our widget is this rental property, and we have to, with the market, the way it is, that's the market in Park Hills, we have to sell it.
Thank you for your answer.
Who wants to go first?
Go right ahead.
What's your demographic? Who's going to buy these or rent these apartments when there is a brand-new development on the other side of the street in the old Chase Law School property, and there's another development on the same side of the street just underneath the condos that are being built? Who are you going to be marketing?
Three different demographics, so there's eight units, there's 24 units here. Eight units on our first floor, one-bedroom units with a garage. So it's first floor living, so that is for empty nesters, empty nesters.
I heard you.
Yep, the second unit above that, above those first floor, or the first floor one-bedroom units is a three-bedroom unit. That would be for a family or for somebody, a couple that has a kid that needs a little more room. So those are large units. And then across the street is a two-story, two-bedroom, would be for a traditional renter, a couple that needs an office or two rooms.
What amenities are you providing for children?
For children?
Yeah, that are going to be three bedrooms.
They, they'll have a yard in the rear with a patio from there.
That's it?
Yes, yep, that's it. Yep, yep.
Is the road private, or is that city road from here up?
I had a drawing as a public road.
So we would maintain it?
The public road, city, it's a public road.
So like for a silver building and whatnot, from here up, that would be?
Public, the public road standards.
Correct.
Yep. Question?
I do have a question. So how are you going to guarantee that that's the only demographic that rents those properties?
I don't understand. Guarantee, guarantee what?
So if they're one-bedroom units on the floor, and it's for empty nesters, what if a young couple whose baby comes and says they want to rent it? How can you say no?
You can't. It's fair housing, it's federal fair housing law.
If a.
That's the target.
College kid comes and wants to rent the unit with three bedrooms, how are you going to say no?
You can't, you're not allowed. It's the same as any other rental property in the United States, you're not allowed to discriminate.
So what your intention may not be what you end up renting to, is that correct?
That always happens in any rental property, yeah.
So my other question is, if you can't rent these properties at these prices, how are you going to guarantee the city of Park Hills that you will not take voucher recipients?
Voucher recipients?
Section eight housing, subsidize people. If you can't rent these for these rents, are you going to lower the rents? Or are you going to give the city of Park Hills a contract that says, we will absolutely not refuse, will refuse to rent low-income people with vouchers? To make sure that our city pays on an economic level that we have bought into?
Well, I'm not going into a project and putting four and a half to five million in it without doing my due diligence on what the rents that we can get. So it's a.
So we have these rented before you build them, or while you're building them to guarantee them?
We would try to pre-rent, we would. I mean, there's no guarantees to anything in life except for death and taxes.
But would you be willing to give them a guarantee that you will not use that kind of?
I don't know how to give a guarantee like that.
Or just a contract with the city that you won't rent?
I don't know.
I mean, fair housing and redlining and all that kind of comes into play.
I don't know if the city would want to be involved in it.
We're not going to voluntarily break the law.
If you live on our side, I'm in a trifecta of this right now. I spent a ton of money on my house, I put the four houses down from Kathy. And now I've got it behind me, I've got it to the side of me, kind of looking at it across the road from me. And you said, what, we're at 49%? So this will probably put us at 50% by the end of 50%.
I'd encourage you to look, I think that's pretty consistent up Dixie Highway.
So.
Fort Mitchell, Fort Wright.
Is this something that we want to have in our town?
It's mostly 35 to 40% in these cities up here.
I mean, we just got a renter in our old homeowners thing, and we're going to have to have a little homeowners meeting about changing how we can do that, because we can't, we can't do that. That was a surprise to us, so it's coming.
So your question was about section eight?
Subsidized housing vouchers, because you said, oh, no, these rents are going to be too high, but what, on the off chance you can't rent a unit or two? So, I mean.
But section eight doesn't pay 1,800 to 2,700 a month, isn't it?
Right now, that may change.
Well, they raise the rents as rents go up. So if they, if they get to 1,800, then our baseline would be over 2,000 a month.
So then you could provide a guarantee to the city based on that, no, that's not a guarantee.
I don't know how you guarantee a city that you don't take section eight vouchers?
You just have a contract with the city?
No.
I can't do that, okay, so you can.
I don't understand that.
I've never heard that.
I don't understand those, a contract with the city that.
I don't think that's, that's proper, there's laws.
Well, I mean, the other thing you just said, you just reduced the setback from 25 feet to 20.
No, we didn't say that.
You did say that, I weighed it down.
No, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, our plan says 25 feet.
The buffer has degrees, the buffer has degrees.
It's 20 feet.
If the requirement's going to be 20, we're showing 25.
So you are going to stay with that?
Well, a lot of it goes to engineering and stuff like that and all that, so yes.
Okay, so but based on the proposal, that is what you proposed, but you could change it to less for those residents behind there?
There's a minimum of 20 feet.
Okay.
So, so it can't go less than 20 feet, we're showing it at 25. If, we don't have to take down a single more tree than, I mean.
But it allows for more landscaping in the rear of the unit. When you go, when you have a 20-foot buffer, doesn't allow that stair step, that stepping of landscape product to get a good effective buffer. So we went to 25 feet to get a more effective buffer.
And, but you're not firm on that?
No, that's what we're showing on the plan.
And this detention basin that is above ground now, you have plans to put it underground if you acquire more property in order to expand?
Well, so the detention basin, we could put it underground now, but that side there, that eventually could connect to future commercial development if the King property and Built's insurance eventually sell, and that could be tomorrow, it could be 10 years from now, 20 years from now. Typically, commercial development, you put your detention underground, underneath the parking, to give you more room for the building and the parking. So it's shown above ground to give you a little more flexibility for the future. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
I just wanted to, but your intention is future development?
Either we develop or somebody else develops it. We can't control who buys King or Built's, they may sell it to somebody else, and then it could be developed through there.
So you would now the detention basin property?
We would, we have to, because through Sanitation District.
So then how would they acquire that?
For us.
If somebody, if somebody were to acquire King's property or Burger or Kings and did an assemblage, then that would come into play. I mean, I would say we'd probably sell it if somebody needed it. You would just basically have it engineered and platted, replatted, so that it could be a part of their property. And that might, by the way, move the detention, where the detention needs to be, might end up moving with the development.
Clear, King and Built's were not interested at all in selling.
Did anyone have a conversation? No. So, and I respect that.
I'm getting tired. So my last question is, if this council does nothing at all today or in the next 60 days, will you still have a way to make money out of the Shetland project without us?
I don't know that answer.
Okay, so you need Shetland, you need the city to do something so you can have a product, is that my understanding?
We wouldn't have to, we could go and do duplexes on it right now under the current sun.
So we don't have to have any involvement at all, because you can run your own zoning and take care of all of the structure and still have a project of your own that you can build on without us?
Correct, yeah.
It will not be the project you want, but you will have a project.
Well, it wouldn't be, the road would not be, the road would not be rebuilt.
Yeah, you would have to cut your own driveway.
Well, we already have a curb cut at the light, so we would just bring a road straight in, just like it looks right now, through the parking lot, and then go.
So, thank you, I understand better now. You want us to do something so you can have the situation that is going to allow you to have the product that you want, so.
And also that the city gets on to rebuild with the funds that the.
Yes, so we don't have to have our own to rebuild, we can wait another two years.
Nobody has to do anything.
Yeah, that's where I'm at, there's no, really no urgency.
If the votes, no, we move.
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
We're not trying to, we're not trying to force anybody's hand in anything. Somebody's going to buy that property.
Yeah.
And multiple people have tried. So if you guys are going to have Economic Development Committee meetings, you might as well have something to have it about, right? So, so, if you're going to have it, you might as well admit that you're going to have some properties that are going to sell and need economic development. You know? Or you just say, we don't need economic development, keep it the way it is, and because, I mean, that's, I mean, you're wasting your time. You know, I wouldn't waste my time like that.
So I mean, you could wait two years, then the property could be bought by somebody else, or we could go and develop it into duplexes, and then there's no chance for any, no chance at all.
You don't own anything right now, is that right? You have a.
We have it under a contract, yeah.
You have, you're under a contract, but you can walk away if.
We could walk away, or we could.
So you're not going to get harmed if we don't do this in the next 60 days?
We wouldn't get harmed, the city could get harmed by not being able to do the road project, because the funds are not there, yeah, correct, yeah.
But the city's not really harmed, because it's just that it's.
Not harmed, but they're losing out on the ability to rebuild.
So just to be clear, if I can elaborate on that, in conversations I've had with people from the city and outside the city and residents, it doesn't hurt us one way or the other. I mean, I've been operating for eight years on Dixie Highway 1450. It's kind of a pain to have those two lights, it's always been a pain, okay? But it can be a pain forever. If somebody else comes in here and you don't allow this to happen, and the conditions aren't made right for the actual commercial part to be turned into that intersection, that intersection will never happen if somebody comes in there, and that light will always be there. Our, it's not an argument, our case is that if it's important, it's really about what's important to the city of Park Hills. If it's important to have the opportunity to work with the development, to get something that maybe they've desired over time, I don't, I'm not going to speak for anybody, but it's a nonsense double light, it's always been that. In the state, in the Dixie fix, was talking about putting a roundabout there, okay? That's going to require more property, those things, they take a lot of property. So on the Dixie fix, it says replace it with a roundabout, okay? So the road diet, if you want the road diet, that means you need sidewalks and less curb cuts. Would make sense, get rid of the two lights right next to each other, creating two really big curb cuts with really busy intersections. Not really busy, I mean, South Arlington's busy, but there's nothing at the Shetland site, and there may never be. So, I mean, it's really, it's really about the city's preferences on this stuff, what's important to the citizens of Park Hills. It doesn't matter what's important to us, I mean, it's. I mean, it's beneficial to us, yes. Important to us, you know, if the city says, "We don't want it. We don't want you here, we move on." It's that simple. No hard feelings.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'm going to wrap it up to any other council person's questions. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I said, "I'm missing my mother's seventieth birthday."
I'm sorry. Well, that's what we'll bring it back to council. And if there's any other questions from council, I really appreciate you two coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our emails are out there still. Anybody has any questions? Fourteen fifty Dixie Highway, if you want to stop.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank the people for coming tonight also.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. You guys have a good night. No, we're not.
Okay, we're going to continue our progress meeting with, we have discussion on economic development.
That's Judy. That's Jim Berling's.
We can have a little quiet in here, so...
Let me grab my stuff.
Okay, Steve's back. We can start now.
All right, we're going to go ahead and jump into the presentation.
Please be quiet, I'm sorry. She's speaking.
So it was mentioned a couple times in the presentation we saw today about the Dixies, the twenty-ten Dixie study, the road diet, a lot of words bopping around. So I want to give some context to that. Also like what Joe said about what Ms. Powers said, progress has to happen. That was a great quote, and it's hard to do the Economic Development Committee in our current situation. So here we are today to talk about this. So in two thousand and ten, Park Hills did a study on Dixie Highway. So it outlined a vision to revitalize the Dixie Highway corridor business district. It was adopted into the city's comprehensive plan, focusing on three things. Economic vitality, safety and walkability, and preserving our small-town character, all things that were mentioned this evening. And I know in this council, we talk about often, and I know we all agree, the importance of safety in this city. We all mention it all the time. It's critical, especially in light of current events, or recent events. So today's conversation asks, "How do we pick up where that vision left off?" So what were the key themes from this study? So what did it recommend? So the vision was a strong business base that complements the neighborhood character. So to Pam's earlier point, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but the audience mentioned the importance of the character of the city of Park Hills, right?
It's Janice.
Hey, Janice, I'm not like...
Janice.
Janice, all right, okay. Janice makes great points. So Janice and Pam bring up good points about, you know, our city's character and aesthetic and how things look. So, you know, tying that all together. So multimodal transportation is what we're seeing down Dixie Highway, right? This is the dream. Cars, bikes, pedestrians, walkable mixed-use corridor, small-scale community-focused development. So this study in two thousand and ten identified this corridor as our city's economic gateway. So why are we talking about this now? Well, what a time, especially after the presentation we just had. We have a lot of momentum going. There's a lot of things happening in terms of economic development in this state as a whole. There's a lot of things going. We've had a lot of community input, and there's a lot of new opportunity. And to Joe's point, it's really hard to have the Economic Development Committee and to have these conversations when we're limited on space and areas that we can develop economically. So the community desire is clear. Residents want more local dining. They want more walkability. They want more gathering spaces. We saw all of this at the Town Hall that we did last year. The views Tapestry Bridge have changed our traffic patterns significantly. And the work that we've already done can really guide these next steps. This is not a start-from-scratch thing. This is not a novel idea. There's been a lot of legwork that's gone into this. The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet puts us right at that sweet spot of thirteen thousand five hundred vehicles that go down the road daily. So it makes us an ideal candidate for what we're going to talk about is this road diet concept. So what we want to do, we want to build a better Dixie Highway. This is the new vision, right? It was conducted in two thousand and ten, but it's still very applicable today. What would happen? It would improve our safety, which is critical again to all of us, our accessibility, our opportunities to have real economic growth for current businesses as well as future businesses that we all talk about and desire to come into this space along the Dixie Highway corridor. So how are we going to approach this? So it's going to be an improvement concept that balances our traffic flow. It gives pedestrians access. We don't have to worry about my rambunctious six-year-old running out, you know, into an incredibly busy street and not looking where he's going. Creates more green spaces. That was brought up over and over again today. And I think that's, again, just like safety, critically important to all of us. This is a very green city. We want to maintain that, if not grow it, and provide true business support. There have been a lot of really notable safety incidents that have occurred recently, a lot of them very heartbreaking, including a loss of life. So we need to consider things like this for the safety of our city, for our residents, and all of the folks that travel and walk through our town. The vision is the road diet. So a road diet is simply this. It's a transportation planning technique. It's not a novel idea. It's happened in many places across this state and across the United States. It reduces the number of traveled lanes or the effective width of the road. So it improves safety, like I said. It improves accessibility, and it improves support to local businesses because it would increase parking, it would increase walkability so people could actually go walk to these places and feel more comfortable doing so. Most common application involves converting four lanes into three. The configuration with two through lanes and a center two-way left turn lane. So you can see in the image here what this may look like. These are a proven strategy. Again, I know I keep saying this, it is not, this is not something we're making up. This is something from the Transportation Cabinet. This has worked in multiple cities. We're going to give you a few examples from the Commonwealth as well as other states in the United States where this has worked very well. But again, enhances safety, business visibility, and walkability. And there's another lovely picture of what this could be. Look at these happy people walking on their bikes. Can't see their faces, but I can feel that this is working for them. But truly, like, you know, being able to, I see a lot of bike riders in our city, and I see a lot of people walking. And doing something like this, I think, would increase the ability for folks to feel safe and, you know, create that sense of place that I think that we all desire. So like I said, some traditional design elements with this. Like I said, it's a transportation strategy. It converts the four lane into a three-lane configuration. Road diets are proven for all of the reasons that I already mentioned. We talk a lot in this council about speed calming measures, right? And how are we going to calm speed? You know, we get our reports from Chief Cody every month, and we, you know, number of speeding tickets and all these sorts of things, and different traffic incidents that we hear about. And this is an effort in creating a citywide speed calming plan while maintaining a smooth traffic flow to an earlier point about, "We've got a lot of road projects going on in northern Kentucky, and if they were all to come together at one time, that is a very scary prospect." And, but, that being said, this, I'll get to this in a minute. This is a long game, what we're talking about today. This wouldn't be something that happened next week, next month, next five years. So this is a long game discussion. So sorry, it went off the rails on that. This is another visual of what it could look like. We talk about, a lot about how things look aesthetically, the character of Park Hills, the beautiful stone structures that are outside of a lot of our entrances. It is beautiful. We love that. That's what makes this city charming. But having something like this where we could plant more trees along the sidewalks, where it could have that curb appeal, I think is very exciting. Makes it very attractive. And I think it's something that our residents may desire. I don't want to assume that, but based on a lot of conversations that we have, I believe that to be true. So why does this matter? Why does this matter to any of you here tonight? So like I said, safer, more connected community. It's creating that sense of place. It's not just about roads. I think we get road diet, we hear, "We're just trying to, oh, you're taking away a lane. That's going to slow everything down. Why would you ever do that? That's insane. Stop talking about it." It's more than that. It improves safety for pedestrians, cyclists, drivers. I think that that's critical. It creates inviting public spaces. It encourages visitors, it foot traffic, which I love. I love the idea of making our city more walkable. And one of the things we talk about in economic development a lot, and why I'm presenting this to you today, it supports our local businesses and our potential for economic growth. We're hitting a bit of a stopping point in our committee at this, right now, because we don't know where to take it from here. We want to know where we can focus, where we can really make an impact and really support our city in a real way and make it grow and watch it thrive. Right now, we're presenting this to you to discuss, is this a logical next step? So Park Hills residents have shared a lot of our ideas. We got a lot of this feedback, anecdotally, at our Town Hall. More places to eat, being able to sit outside, enjoy the beauty of the city, see people walking, see your neighbors, create more community gathering spaces. And I feel like I've known a lot of you enough, these are all things that I hear you all mention. So I know that this is of value and importance to all of you. So, like I said, there are a lot of success stories. You may not know this about me. I drive really far to work every day. I drive to places like Georgetown and Elizabethtown and Louisville multiple times a week. So I get to see a lot of these really cool things and how they work. Georgetown is absolutely gorgeous. I'm sure a lot of you have been there recently. It's not very far from here. But these things work. The businesses in these communities initially thought this would reduce sales, but quite the opposite happened. Communities that improved their business corridor have seen increased opportunities for events like farmers' markets, food trucks, outdoor dining, all ideas Park Hills residents have suggested and advocated for. And it just increases the aesthetic of these communities. So what this will look like for Park Hills? So imagine a corridor that's not just easier to walk down, drive down, bike down, but one that creates a space for outdoor dining, gathering, and small business growth. That's what we are proposing here for you tonight.
And we, not to interrupt you...
You're okay.
That's my question right there. Where is the corridor? Like, where does it start and where does it end?
Pam, you teed me right up. That's my big animal. Where would this happen? So previously, the Economic Development and Business Committee suggests that this stretch just between what we're talking about tonight, Arlington and the views. But upon further reflection and a lot of discussion within our committee, we think it may make more sense to do the full stretch of Dixie Highway in Park Hills. Get it all. With the possibility of coordinating with Covington and Fort Wright as far as they think it's reasonable, but coordination would be necessary regardless of what we do. But we think it would be advantageous to do the entire stretch.
So all the way up to St. James then?
Okay. And then all the way down to the original spot. So some ideas of general concepts. These are not illustrated specifically for Park Hills, but they give you an idea of what things could look like. It's enhancing more green, it's our desire for more green space, the walkability. And what we need desperately, parking. We talk about this a lot. So we have a couple of visuals here of what things could look like. So that's concept two. I believe we have a concept three. So you can get an idea of what these things could potentially be. So what this is not. And I understand that there are concerns. There's often misconceptions with these things. And just like we appreciated Joe and Greg coming tonight to dispel any concerns or talk about them or any misconceptions, we've heard some concerns about this. But we're committed to working with local businesses to ensure the project really does support their needs. It makes sense for them. We don't want to assume that we have best answer, this is the right forward. We don't want to do anything in a silo, right? We want to make sure that this works for everybody. Additionally, a road diet may provide additional parking in some areas, and I think that would be a benefit to all of us. We talk about that a lot. It was mentioned here tonight. End of the day, what we want to do is we want to increase walkability. Safety is key. We want to support our business district where we can and support its growth for those already there and for those who will be here in the future. We want to increase our foot traffic and increase our visibility. So what do we do next? So here's where we are with this. So we've, our next steps would be, we request an updated proposal for an engineering and traffic study to evaluate the feasibility and impact of a road diet in the corridor improvements. We engage local businesses and neighboring cities to gather input, foster collaboration, and build regional support, just like we're trying to do here tonight. I think what Joe brought up is important. How we communicate to communities is critical. And I think we can expand on that and be very intentional with how we communicate these messages and how we gather feedback from folks. I think we need to do that as much, as many channels as possible in how people get their information. We really need to think about that as well, but that's a separate conversation. We need to develop and refine a design concept based on these priorities and the engineering recommendations, pursue grant funding and partnerships to help offset these costs, and pilot low-cost community events like food truck days, small business showcases to increase foot traffic and test activation strategies. This, and just for everyone here, and I know this was mentioned tonight, this is just for discussion this evening. We're not voting on anything or making any decisions. This is just for us to chat about it. It's been something that's been talked about for a long time. So for council to consider, why are we requesting this and why now? So the original proposal included with this presentation is over a year old. We want, we have copies of that as well. We want to expand the scope beyond Arlington to Covington, as we've talked about in the whole piece.
I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, thanks. A revised study is going to be essential to evaluate those current conditions, right? Make sure we're hitting all of the safety issues and the design options that may be available to us. Again, I don't want to assume that this, we have all the answers. We've really discussed this heavily in our committee. We believe that economic development in the city is critical, but currently, you know, it's a little limited. I mean, we talked about that tonight, and how can we support this? The final thing that I'll say is that this is a long game. This is something, I think, I can't remember if it was Georgetown or Elizabethtown. Don't quote me, I'm making a guess. But it was like thirty years. It took a long time to get to where they needed to go to get this done. It's a long game.
Right.
So I'll leave you with this. I wrote this this afternoon, and I'm going to break all the rules of presenting and read it to you. So when people drive into Park Hills, what do we want them to see? Do we want to see another busy highway that people speed through? Hopefully not speeding. Or a welcoming corridor that reflects the charm and strength of our city? Right now, Dixie Highway belongs to the cars. Every day, more than thirteen thousand five hundred vehicles cut through here at speeds, make it unsafe for families to walk, for kids to cross, and for businesses to grow, thrive, and join our city. But it doesn't have to stay that way. Across the country and right here in Kentucky, communities like Lexington and Louisville have proven that slowing traffic actually speeds up growth. Property values rise, businesses gain customers, and residents enjoy safer, more beautiful streets. Park Hills is turning one hundred years old. What a better time to reimagine our gateway corridor so it reflects our pride, protects our people, and drives our future economy. A road diet isn't about taking something away. It's about transforming Dixie Highway into a place where safety, beauty, and opportunity all come together.
Good statement.
I have a question. Based on the conversation we just had...
Based on the conversation we just had with the parking he has down at his business and all of them, he said have issues, would this create more parking for the businesses?
It could. It could, as I, I mean, depending on your model. Now, I remember in that 2010 study, the reconfiguration of Arlington was also part of that study and a recommendation. I don't know if that was linked to the road diet issue or if it was just part of the study as a whole. I, do you remember?
I can clarify this a little bit, because I've spent some time with this. Candy has it right in front of me. But also...
I have the Dixie Study, the '06.
Okay, is that a different? Oh, that's the '06 version. Okay. So yes, there were, I think there were three different options for reconfiguration of where Arlington met Dixie, and they were all different from the one that we saw today.
Yeah, I only saw one that I remember.
Yeah. And we, you know, all of this is online, like, the whole study is online, so anyone can go and look at it.
You can look at it, right.
So we can also post and share.
There were a lot of meetings, you know, several of those. I just remember it being presented in person. The thing that I liked best about your presentation tonight is the change in where this fab to me is...
The whole way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Especially the changes at St. Joseph's Heights. I mean, like, that's a huge piece.
I think in that, we don't really know what's going to happen there, but there could be a lot of, you know, we could have good things there.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think one other thing I want to mention is that I've heard in the past, people talk about how, oh, this wasn't feasible back in 2010. There was a reason why it wasn't feasible. Well, I think, I'm guessing, and there, I think there are a lot of components to this. But I think all of the drawings that I've seen that are in the 2010 study show a median. A road diet doesn't have a median. It has three lanes instead of four. And it doesn't mean we couldn't have, you know, like, little grassy medians at points or something, but kind of like have this, yeah, like, how this looks. But I suspect that that was part of the reason because that it was like a median all the way down the road. And I think that that was probably not something that KYTC was in support of. So I think what we're talking about tonight is something that's a little bit of a shift from that, but it's still...
Yeah. What you did there is very different from what was shown there.
Yeah, the '06 goes all the way down.
Right. Well, we, well, this is a little more like what's out in Edford where they have that sort of tapered, you know, just sort of breaks up the pavement a lot.
And I don't know, like, this is maybe more specific, but I just think about even the small things that we can do to sort of get to this point, like, you know, and hopefully, like, the 2010 is the start of our 30-year mark, so that we're not looking at so far down the road. But I think about things like, you know, what if we started with just planting some trees in certain locations, you know? Like, I think about how sunny it is on Dixie Highway just in front of Cov Caff. Like, if there were more trees right there, I mean, that's...
Well, you know, I love that.
Yes.
I mean, I really do. If, but if you plant trees, the everything, like, the street tree, it's like, love and love here. So you have the water. I mean, so agreements would be to be... But yeah, I think I would be...
And that real opportunity for partnership with our large institutions that are in the city is, you know, and really thinking about how we do these strategic partnerships with not just businesses, but with the folks that are in our communities, because, you know, we love them and we're happy that they're here and how we can mutually support each other in several ways.
You talk about making the highway, you know, more pedestrian friendly. So the sidewalks that exist on the highway, to me, are not pedestrian friendly. I mean, are you...
Exposed.
Yeah. Like...
No, really.
Yes.
Agreed. So I'm not sure how, I like this design that you showed here because you have that tree line.
A little buffer.
Yeah. I think that's very helpful.
Yep. Let's think about it. Any other questions?
Well, the next big question's money, but we can't get into that much.
Well, I wrote down a couple, not just money, yeah, but we have to have permission. That's all owned by KYTC, so you're pretty tough to work with, too, so...
Well, I want to bring us back to the next step slide because I think this is what we're going to be talking about, I think, at our next council meeting. This is going to sound sort of meta, but like, asking for a proposal for a proposal, essentially, from Jay Baer.
Yeah.
Because what I printed out and what we shared tonight, this is from last year.
This is old.
We would want to update that. And Jay is on board with that. He's already started some conversations with KYTC. I mean, I think that we're going to learn a lot, you know, if we do that. So I think let's start with agreeing whether we want to ask him to put together, like, prepare a proposal for that.
Yeah. A proposal for a proposal is what we're asking for.
That's right.
Because double the space, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. We just want to make sure, too, because we have been, you know, well, before my time, but this has been discussed for a long time, and making sure that we're clear and, like, we have enough stuff here. We, you know, we talked about it tonight.
And what is the right next step?
What is the right next step? So just making sure, I wanted it to be on, Sarah and I have talked, I wanted it to be on everyone's radar. It's supported by the Economic Development and Business Committee is, you know, what we want to focus on as a committee.
We keep circling back to it, like, we'll talk about something else.
Would this be like a grant funding thing that you think you have?
Potentially, yeah. There's a lot of different, not just like, you know, the money that's been mentioned tonight. I mean, hopefully Senator McDaniel does reinvest in that pot of money. You know, that's, we don't know. But there's a lot of different pots of money through KYTC and other different grants, like the Safe Cities Grant, things like that.
And I think we have to make sure that we are in agreement that this is something we think is a good idea before we start shopping it with our neighbors and our representatives and all these folks.
Yeah, there's a million steps involved in this, but one thing I think everybody sitting here, I'm sure sitting here agrees, long as we want safety for our pedestrians. It's just huge.
It's huge.
I mean...
Yeah. And that everything else is just charity.
And our stretch of the highway is an unsafe stretch. I'm not going to go into statistics, but since I've served high council, there've been at least two just horrible things.
In the last year, there have been two really significant, maybe more.
So, I mean, I...
In my time, there's two deaths. So that's a...
Hey, Emily?
Yeah, please. I'm thinking of the area in Covington, like, Braxton and Plano Gardens and the parking place. Is that something similar to this? Because they increased parking a lot.
Like, but you can still get through there.
It's really, really nice now. And that looks very similar to, I mean, it's a very small area, but it's, I don't know, but if that's a reference, people want to go see how that used to be and how it is now. It's really nice.
I think that's a good point, because it's similar in, um...
It's similar in...
Or Braxton or Plano.
Yeah. In Georgetown, it looks similar to that area.
I'm still in Georgetown. It's really nice.
So cute.
Yeah, it's very nice. I mean, it's very functional, too.
It works, the traffic flows.
And it's the same thing, like, when they were doing, I drive that on my Saturday day when they were doing it, it's like, you know, what are they doing? Like, how did they do it? It made no sense. But now that they've done it, like, there's so much more parking on both sides. I don't know how they came up with so much space with what was there.
Right.
But they, it's really much, the sidewalk is bigger, the sidewalk's wider.
So many businesses there now. Like, there's so many more than there ever were.
Oh, yeah. And you can park, you can just, you don't have to, like, drive around 100 times if I park this spot, so...
Is that one-way now?
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to go around two-way?
It had been one-way for a while.
Yeah.
Long ago, or a bit two-way, but it had been one-way for a while.
Yeah, that whole street all the way down is one-way.
I don't want to keep everybody all night, so, you know, how much you want to discuss or...
I think it's all as long as we know, like, we want to keep this on our radar and continue to discuss it.
How do we get mics on this board?
Thank you all so much, for listening.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Emily, can you just send that to me?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yes. We talked about that recently.
Well, they're working on that. I just met with them this week about bringing more mics and setting up. And I think by our next meeting, they may be...
How many are there right now?
Well, none, none right now up here. Usually they put two big mics here, and I told the guy that to bring those back if he wants, but he had other, you know, stuff at his office that he wanted to bring and set it up, so...
I remember when you were at the convent and then where you were at that old restaurant place that's been on the door, and I'm getting older and I wouldn't appreciate the mics if you don't mind. Thank you.
Okay.
Sir, remember?
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. Bye, good night, everyone.